Thank you, thank you.
These are very special times, let's not take it for granted. And if we haven't, or if by omission we forgot, can we just try to sanitize our hands again? You know, just observe all the rules and regulations, not for any other person, but for your own person's sake. You know, sanitize your hands, keep safe for yourself and for your family. Those of you who are with your wife, allow them to come. I beg you, no carry sickness, go give one. All that sanitize your hands. Thank you. So, how is that? Standing on the obvious observation that we expected. I will ask you all, you're already, and do it very important, I give a quick reminder. This is a town hall meeting. This is a town hall meeting, meaning this is a meeting where all Nigerians who, or should we say Nigerian stakeholders, who on behalf of their groups or on behalf of other Nigerians have already, have many questions to put forward to the Nigerian government being represented here by the embassy. So before we go on with every other program on ground, even though we have recited our national anthem, it is also very, very normal in the Nigerian culture that we kick off with prayers. So, to lead us in this prayer, I'm going to call forward Apostle Helen Docott. Thank you very much.
Amen. Just a minute to read the prescription from the Bible, because I believe that this is a very lucky occasion we as Nigerians to gather together at least, to say something, to pray and thank God for kind amongst us and protecting us in my household in the midst of this coronavirus season. The 29th verse from the Bible says, “Sip the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried your intro.” Pray to the Lord for it, because it is prosperity, you will prosper. Hallelujah. And also in Proverbs, chapter 18, 21, the Bible says, “The tongue has the power of life and death, and those who love it will be eaten.” Why am I reading this? We as Nigerians, we are always used to seeing negativity in our country. We don't speak good. When somebody calls Nigeria, we say, hmm, that country, hmm, that. And we are eating the fruit of our lips because we are only speaking negativity in our country. But when we will agree and pray for our country, for it to prosper, it will prosper. Hallelujah. I am bringing this into awareness to us today, that we must begin to learn how to speak positively in our country, positively in the life of our leaders, and stop finding faults in them. So on the note, on this note, let's pray for the prosperity of our country. We're not talking about prosperity, I'm talking about the foregone to intervene in our country in a time race. We all have relatives there. This pandemic is not a small thing. It's killing, it's deadly. But in the midst of it, when people call upon the Lord, I believe he can withdraw the wrath and show mercy. So on this note, one minute, let everybody pray. Just find the Lord for who is. And let's go in the meeting in this time, hallelujah, that there will be wisdom, knowledge, understanding, release not to us, as our ambassador has come to want to speak to us. Let the Lord, enduring with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, to pour out all to us like a father, what he expects us to know, in Jesus' name. Shall we all pray this? Father, bless you, and we thank you for the privilege to give it unto us, to gather as a nation, as a people, as your own children. Thank you, O God, for that privilege. Lord, we come in our country, Nigeria, to you. Ask that you continue to protect us. Ask, O God, that your peace shall reign upon our leaders, reign upon our citizens, reign upon our people. Lord, we are asking you in the midst of this coronavirus, that you will continue to protect us. That this COVID will not continue to touch our people. In the mighty name of Jesus, we will drop a hand of COVID-19 out of our nation, out of our continent. Lord, we are asking you that you will definitely intervene and protect us and grant us life instead of death. If perchance, we'll be speaking evil, we'll be speaking negativity to our own country, to our own nation, to our own people, that we are delivering people in a very difficult way, without worrying the costly verses. And that's why your wrath has come upon us, Father, we ask that you show mercy in Jesus' name. We also pray at this moment for discretion to be given unto us in this meeting. We pray for wisdom upon our ambassador. It is a privilege that you brought him into this floor. Some people here today are singing for the prosperity. As a father, and the first representative of Nigeria here in the land, Father, we commit him into your hand. May he stand up and prosper us. May you bless him, extend him. May he stand upon rivers of wealth, upon rivers of good knowledge and good wisdom. May every deliberation today go peacefully. Let there not be any chaos, let there not be embarrassment in the name of Jesus, we pray with thanks.
Thank you very much. Please, blessed to remain standing, because it's very common in Nigeria that the Christian and the Muslim brothers start a prayer. To represent the Muslim, please share it today.
In the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, we thank you today for this gathering. We bless you. We ask O Myself Allah to guide us through. We ask O Myself Allah for your protection on our ambassador and everyone of us in this gathering. In the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, we O Myself Allah, continue to be with every one of us so that we end this program with peace and mercy of Allah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We all are in our seats now. I would like to say a very big thank you for your patience, but that's what makes us Nigerians. We are diverse, we are different in different unique ways. I would have said, maybe traditionally they are still praying, but they have been praying for us in their hearts. So, I know they are praying for us, they are guiding us, and they are here with positive energy. So, on that note, I would like to welcome to the mic a very, very dynamic person. One person that I know a lot of us didn't know him, say, five years ago or so. And that's how life is. Some of us are deep waters, we run deep. So the day they call us, we will answer in a big way. And that is what this person I'm about to call forward has been. He's a man full of wisdom, he's a man full of strength, patience, and most of all, he's a fine boy. I introduce to you our chairman, Mr. Donald Kekke.
Your Excellency, Ambassador Oji Niko Fafou. Charismatic, the man with great sense of mission. I recognize your presence. Members of the Nigerian mission here in the Netherlands, Chairman, President, Committee Leaders of various Nigerian associations here present, our partners. I would want to welcome on here my fellow executive members of United Nigerian Platform here present, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. This is yet another great day in the history of Nigerian community in the Netherlands. Town Hall Meeting is a tradition dating back from the 17th century, 277 years from today. So a practice that has continued after this time means there is something spectacular. Our being here couldn't have been without the wisdom, the drive of His Excellency. Under normal circumstances, we should be the ones craving for this dialogue, because Town Hall Meeting is set. A ground, it's a level, it's a... It brings everyone to ground zero to sit and discuss. And those of us who were at the last phase of our leadership training yesterday, it was a very good coincidence that what she talked of us on dialogue. Dialogue can break all barriers. And that is what the occasion for today calls for. We are going through a period that the world is in turmoil. We are going through a period that one of the greatest issues we have is that there's a big divide, there's a big gap between the lead and the leaders. And a forum like this brings us together to talk and to come up with solutions to our different issues. And to that again, sir, we can't thank you enough for bringing about this forum. It is now up to us to make the best use of this opportunity. We are setting discussion in motion, not just for today, but for years to come, that at the end of our discussions today, resolutions we reach to, we could take them along with us in years to come, and they'll quit it, and they'll bring them to our community to come. I would want to crave on your indulgence. Not all the questions brought forward tonight will get to be answered, but one thing we can assure you is that they will be listened to, they'll be taken on board, and they'll be looked into as appropriately as possible. This is, once again, I wouldn't want to take much of your time, but to thank you all for seizing the time, denying yourself of the comfort of home on a day like this, to be here, to sit with His Excellency and His team to discuss issues of community trends. Thank you once again, as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I can only say God bless you. And may God continue to strengthen you, continue to guide you, to lead. Just a quick reminder about the purpose of this meeting. The purpose, we are all going to explore on our own. But for some of us who's never attended any of these meetings before in the past, great decisions has been made in Town Hall Meetings. Many changes has been brought forth in operational matters, how the embassy operates, how the embassy relates with its people here in the Netherlands. That has been achieved in the past in Town Hall Meetings. I particularly remember the one in Tilburg with Mama, with Madame Makondi. That's, sorry. That's brought a very big change. And this will also definitely bring a big change. So please, let's be very, very direct about some of our worries, be very concise about the questions, and let's bring positive energy to the table with the hope that everything we lay down here will bring positive change at the end, long run. While dropping down that small word, I would also like to give the mic the space to speak and address us as a people to one very young... Because most of us as Nigerians, we are still used to thinking that big, big positions belong to elderly, not bald men. There is no man that is old. No man is old, I can testify to that. You know, to elderly people, advanced people, not for any wrong reason, because yes, we all know that without a good past, our presence will be shaken. And whether we appreciate it or not, our elders have fought a very big fight to make us stand where we are today, which is one of the reasons why the trust of giving certain positions to the elderly comes to play. But next particular concern is elderly in the spirit, elderly in the mind, strong physically, young also physically, and have dared to take upon positions that has shaken and made a lot of people, broken a lot of people. But because being a leader in the Netherlands is like being a leader in Nigeria. We Nigerians in the Netherlands are so very dynamic, we're so diverse, we're so educated, that putting us together is a big challenge. But this particular blessing has taken on the challenge. Despite all the differences, all the mourning, and all the bitterness, he has stood, and he's not been shaken. He has been very fair, and he introduced our own very ambassador to the Netherlands, the ambassador. Ambassador Oji Niko Fafou. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think that if the introduction is capable of catapulting someone to heaven, I should be in heaven waiting to welcome some of you. The Chairman, United Nigerian Platform, and members of the Leader Board of Advisors, very distinguished ladies and gentlemen, great Nigerian men and women. It is indeed my pleasure and gratitude to have this Town Hall Meeting with Nigerian community today in Amsterdam. First, let me thank all of you for taking the risk to be here despite the scare of coronavirus, also known as COVID-19. Let me also remind us to take all the precautionary measures prescribed by health authorities to remain safe while we are here. Though I am told that a few Nigerians were infected, but it is to his glory that they are all safe and sound. Let me also take this liberty to extend my heartfelt condolences to those who lost their loved ones here and either here in the Netherlands or in Nigeria due to this dreaded COVID-19. May the souls of the departed rest in the bosom of the Lord. It is my fervent prayer that no Nigeria will suffer from this virus again in the Netherlands. In the same token, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the leadership of the United Nigerian Platform, UNP, and Reverend Helen for their patriotic contributions to vulnerable Nigerians during the worst days of the lockdown. These wonderful Nigerians were everywhere in collaboration with local NGOs in reaching out to our brothers and sisters who will leave materials in the true spirit of being one's brother's keeper. This is worthy of emulation by all of us. We are proud of them, and we thank them immensely. As you are aware, this is my maiden Town Hall Meeting with the Nigerian community since my assumption of office nearly three years ago. The importance of this kind of meeting cannot be overemphasized. I believe this is the only way I can brief you on the activities of the embassy and to have direct feedback from Nigerians. This engagement could have come much earlier than now, but for the unfortunate events within the Nigerian community that thwarted every positive move, while we tried the best we could to find a makeable resolution of the crisis. Some unpretentious elements for selfish reasons, just as they are still trying to do relentlessly, did everything possible to undermine our resolve. At the end of it all, and to the glory of Almighty God, we succeeded in reorganizing the Nigerian community here in the Netherlands with the inauguration of the new leadership of UNP, with the inauguration of the new leadership of UNP in November last year. Let me mention that the embassy could not have succeeded without the support and backing of every well-meaning Nigerian in the Netherlands. I'd like to take this opportunity to once again thank all of you for your courage and for the patriotism you displayed during the period. Permit me to share with you what the embassy has been doing since my assumption of office. Diplomatically, we have achieved quite some modest, we've recorded quite some modest achievement in improving the relations between Nigeria and the Netherlands. It has never been so good between the two countries. Some of you may recall that we hosted our president in July 2018 when he came to deliver a keynote speech at the International Criminal Court on the 20th anniversary of the court. Only last November, the Dutch Prime Minister also visited Nigeria. In addition to that, the Dutch Foreign Minister and his international development cooperation counterpart were in Nigeria in January and July 2019. This is a high-provocation, which has improved the trade and economic and diplomatic relations between Nigeria and the Netherlands. And of course, I must not forget to mention the upgrade of the Dutch Trade Office in Lagos to a full-fledged consulate, with the appointment of a consul general right now in Lagos since 2019, which I believe will facilitate trade and commerce between the two countries. These visits have also capitalized in tremendous economic benefits in investment worth millions of euros, generating millions of employment in Nigeria. This is the first time such has been recorded in the history of our relations between Nigeria and the Netherlands. Another area that we have recorded improved relations is consular matters. By that I mean deportation of undocumented Nigerians, staying illegally in the Netherlands. Prior to this time, I was told Nigerians were subjected to forced deportation. I can tell you that all that is now in the past. We have worked to ensure full implementation of the cooperation migration signed between the two countries. There is no more arbitrary deportation of Nigerians because the embassy works in sync with the IND. In furtherance of the excellent relations between the embassy and the IND, I took a top of two detention centers in Rotterdam and Amsterdam last year to acquaint myself with the conditions in those centers. I had hoped to visit other centers this year, but for COVID-19 and of course, for other issues that we mentioned earlier. On evacuation of stranded Nigerians in the Netherlands, we have collaborated, we have been collaborating with Air France through our embassy in France. I am pleased to inform you that some Nigerians have actually been evacuated from the Netherlands through the process. Our embassy in France is coordinating the exercise because the number of persons that registered in Netherlands was too low to have direct flight from here. This is an ongoing exercise. So those who are still interested and wish that they become part of this process of evacuating them due to the COVID-19 pandemic can still register online through the embassy. You will all agree with me that the embassy has been proactive in its engagement with the Nigerian community. There have been marked improvements and commitment in service delivery, especially in the immigration section of the embassy. I am told that Nigerians appreciate our current state of affairs in the department. As the leader, the people are my constituents, and I preach this to officers all the time. I can assure you, the embassy will always be there to protect the interest of Nigerians in the Netherlands in any way we can. You might have also noticed recent changes in the visa section. Not only has the visa processing changed, also changed is the visa fee. Before the commencement of the new visa regime in February, the embassy called a stakeholders meeting, including UNP and NIDO, to sensitize them on the changes. Let me assure you that these changes are in line with global standards and aimed at ensuring efficient service delivery. The passport section of the embassy has since reopened following the COVID-19 lockdown. However, we are faced with a huge backlog of pending applications. For that reason, there will be slight delay in people getting their passports. The situation has been compounded by the broken down of cameras and other accessories as a result of disuse during this period. Nonetheless, we are determined to get a replacement as soon as possible, and I therefore appeal to applicants to bear with us at this crucial time. The embassy's pursuit of the federal government policy on citizenship diplomacy cannot be achieved without a well- without a well-organized community. To that extent, the embassy will continue to support the United Nigerian Platform and NIDO in our collective drive to project the image of Nigeria in the Netherlands. As I always say, I'm only a diplomatic officially recognized envoy of the president. For me, every Nigerian in the Netherlands is ambassador because whatever we do affects the image of our great country, positively or negatively. For that reason, we must individually and collectively always portray ourselves to be good ambassadors of Nigeria and in the best interest of our country. Furthermore, I wish to reaffirm embassy's commitment to identify with the Nigerian community through the platform of UNP for the advancement of our national interest in the Netherlands. The embassy will, in any way possible, support the proposed Nigerian Cultural Day by UNP, which will go a long way in showcasing our rich cultural heritage. I believe the event will also be a rallying point to foster unity among the diverse elements within the Nigerian community. I therefore call on all Nigerians to actively participate to make the event a great success. Ladies and gentlemen, great patriots, let me use this opportunity to once again appreciate the leadership of UNP and the Board of Advisors and the entire Nigerian community for the determination to attend this meeting. It was my desire to hold this event every quarter, but I am told that the next one will be in Brader in two weeks. I hope that the coronavirus would have disappeared then and allow us to be there. Let me also espouse my sustained support for the new leadership of UNP. This is the only way that we can succeed as the people here, is to have a platform that will have the support and the force of all of us and the force of implementing our collective aspirations. There can be no meaningful engagement with the Nigerian community without an organized platform. You all fought for it and therefore the honor is on all of us to support and nurture it to succeed. Let me conclude by restating that I have an announcement to make and to say that for everything that has a beginning, has an end. I therefore want to use this opportunity to inform you that my call of duty as ambassador has come to an end. That means I will be returning to Nigeria very soon. It is my desire to see UNP to UNP to maturation. Yes. I am pleased with the achievements so far within the short period, but I can assure you that I will be leaving you with full memories and nostalgia. My thoughts and prayers will continue to be with you to continue to pursue our greatness because we are a great people. Lastly, I wish to urge all of you to remain law-abiding and be good ambassadors of our great country. That's the only way we can fight the image problem of our country. We must not allow the few bad acts amongst us to tarnish the image of our great country. We are a good people, we have a great country. Tomorrow can only be better. I will make all information about my departure available to the leadership of UNCP. I've been proud to be and to work with all of you. It has been an amazing experience for me. Thank you and God bless you.
That was a very happy hour, ambassador. Thank you very much. My, some of my people saying namen. That was a very heavy one, the drop of us. Just like that, dua. Hey. Wena.
Unamen.
Unamen. Anyway, um. Ah, nobody just be shake. This is not a good. Anyway, for some of, for some of us who have been active in the Nigerian community, you would understand why some of us are heartbroken because it's been a very notable and memorable journey with His Excellency. And, yes. Ah. Don't cry. They continue. Anyway, I'm human. So if I cry, you guys will forgive me. It's because it's a very heartbroken. Sometimes when some people are leaving, we are like, ah.
You're happy they are going.
We don't even show the happiness, we do like this. When they are not going, we don't do like this. Ah, for this one, anyway. It's, we'll continue the discussion. Outside this whole town hall meeting, it is more professional. Now, next on the list of item on our agenda is the moment we have all been waiting for and that is the moment of the Q and A session, the question time. And I will just say please, let us ask everything. Who knows? And then sometimes, one thing I have learned is that the question may not have an answer, but it may be informational for somebody who is just around the corner, like, oh, this kind of thing, they there. And we know. That's sadness, you want comedy? Okay, yes, yes, I'm on it. No, I'm not a comedian. I'm on it. Um, well, I didn't jump it on purpose. Oh, sorry, I did jump it on purpose because we actually started running out of leads. And I'm sure a lot of people have made the reasons why we are all here today and let us to ask questions. Well, while we are thinking of our question to ask, it is also very important that I mention to all of you here because some people I know, some people I don't know, some people know each other, some people don't know each other, some people are coming out for the first time and some people are, yeah, they are regular faces, but we really don't know them. So I would like to quickly use this very short period to ask people to introduce themselves to the. I don't know if anybody wants to vote the same, right? We can all hear each other. Yes, I don't think it would be nice for us to just practicing the safety. Okay, so I'm going to start from here. You cannot be out of the picture. Please, a short introduction and let everybody know where they can hold you anytime they are looking for you.
Yeah, my name is Maxwell Udochi Angokeke. An officer in the embassy, my counselor, charge of Nigerian community, including Nigerian students. Because I've been here, I've met some of you. I've been here for about six months now. So it's also another privilege to meet with most of you. Thank you very much.
My name is George Diddel, the immigration attache in the embassy.
My name is Oloninjo Nulufemi, counselor with the embassy.
My name is Aisha Twaaliu, the administrative attache at the embassy.
My name is David, I'm a community and development engagement person.
My name is Mbay Emmanuel. I didn't base here, I came for something.
It's okay. We are happy to meet in Istanbul. And the cameraman, please, can you introduce yourself?
My name is Charles Nalini, I'm a Nigerian official.
My name is Albeo Wakobadia. I am the president of a do union here in Netherlands. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Dominic, a member of Hareza.
My name is Oji Akkoma, representing our Hareza.
A long guest Nigerian youth in the house.
My name is Olivia Aguey, I'm a father, Oke Bustari Aguey.
My name is Chief Edmon, Edmon Agogo, the president of Igbo Union in Netherlands.
My names are Dikin John Osaranda Dicancy Amanda Sun and the vice-chairman of the United Nigerian Platform, Netherlands.
My name is Pastor Emmanuel Eme, representing Oda La Association in the Netherlands.
My names are K. Wustanliadu, the vice-president of Igbo Union and the president of the Bosque Club here in Netherlands.
My pastor Helen Rudocken, a reverend minister, senior pastor of the church and also the director of Freedom Vice Commander. I'm serving the Nigerian to the escort on the CEC level. Thank you.
My name is Mrs. Maria Olabosede. I'm a member of UPL.
Fellow Nigerians. My name is Alahaji William Adongo. I am a chief presenter of Niger TV, Nigeria Radio. Everyone is white. What is a sign is not against my side, but sign is against some people's side. So I take this opportunity to address the federal republic of Nigeria and to sell my cry and my grievances. So I take the cry from my fellow MC and I cry her cry.
My name is William Zolong. I am a Nigerian comedian in the city of Amsterdam. I present programs on Niger TV, both comedy programs and programs for humanity. At the same time, I do adverts and anything Nigerians want to put out there.
Okay, thank you very much. No, 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 Gataki is not lost. Gataki is not lost completely. It's just that we want to keep the people who live down in this and then we all you. Yes. Gataki is completely not lost, he's still on for more to be entertained. Sir.
I'm Chief Ransom Bangyukle, I'm representing Oda Agwata in the Netherlands.
I am Michael Vidiwamfo, chairman of the Union Netherlands.
I'm First Aimo Proo, United Nigerian Platform in the Netherlands.
My name is Chief Azan, logistic staff in the embassy.
My name is Master Grand Bay in Netherlands.
My name is Alexander Dinejika. I represent Africa Media, Radio Nigeria.
Yes.
My name is Mrs. Norma Mimi David Achoku. I'm a member of the Union.
Hey, Achoku. Chief.
My name is Chief Mrs. Remi Diara Ojitalayo, all the way from Tilburg, Netherlands. I'm the president of United Nigerian Women's Platform.
My name is Asher Manuel, this is my entire sister, Mirato Parish. If you ever like, I'm also a member of the European Union in the Netherlands.
I'm a patron of Igbo Union and a patron of the most citizens in the Netherlands.
I'm Prince Jean-Paul Igejeri. I'm a member of Afemaforo, Netherlands and former president of Afemaforo.
My name is Patricia Ogazi. I'm the provost of Omadi, Netherlands.
Good day, my people, Your Excellency. Our protocol develops up. I'm Chief Mrs. Elizabeth Shola King, the leader of ON Omolu Association in the Netherlands, from West Frisland.
Sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Collins Chigozianaguba, member of New York, Netherlands and a financial controller of the ING Bank. Also a founder of Black Employment inclusive group in ING Bank.
Information, information.
My name is Aguma Efo. I work with Ken CB2B Plus's foundation in Delhi.
Yes, yes.
My name is Indidi Amaka Ese. I'm a member of Omadi.
My name is Faneke Mites Sinesha. Member of Omolu Association of Netherlands.
You're welcome. Sir, as today Nigerian miss, that new citizenship today, just for today.
My name is Joel Thuhm. I've been working for Ken CB2B, a ritual organization which he was working. I've been working for about 12 years in Nigeria. Came back recently with one of the last fights. I miss my Abuja name.
Okay. Once you miss Abuja, you will dash your citizenship for more. You're welcome, you're welcome, sir. Sir? Yes, sir.
My name is Ayola Olatujie. What people used to call me, the code of Amsterdam. I am the president of the European Union of the World.
You're welcome, sir.
My name is Adeninka Dasha River. Deputy coordinator of Omolu, you know, and it is international chairman.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Igor, nobody there your back, nobody there your front. Now you be all-rounder.
I am a senior one, hope to be in Ogi. Patron Igbo Union in the last, it's a little cold, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Sir? Sir?
My name is Shodipo Adidamolo Abiodoo. I am the secretary of the Odua Progressive Union in the Netherlands. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Sir?
My name is Akoguba Diyojo. Former governorship administrator of the state. Stick Codea, Odua Progressive Union and European Community. Now governor of the American group worldwide.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir. You're welcome, sir. You're welcome. Sir?
Good evening all. My name is Jerome Chinanyawasonde. President of the Agwata. As in Netherlands.
You're welcome, sir. Um, our, just.
DJ.
DJ.
My name is Jeff Williams Abangbay. I'm the chief host-stroke预senter of Niger Radio and Niger TV. The number one DJ of Nigerian community in the Netherlands.
You are very good. Okay, as you can see, some two people have just taken names so we will just use the opportunity to make them introduce themselves to the crowd. Sir? You're welcome, sir. Yes, sir.
Fred Giaro, I'm the president of a do community in Rotterdam.
You're welcome, sir. And the beautiful lady behind you.
I'm the wife.
That's my wife.
Oh, you're the, no, you're the wife.
Abby.
I need you, wife. You're welcome, you're welcome. Okay, sir, I will start for you. Sir? Uh-uh, I should. Ah, sorry, uh-uh, you're ready. Please, sir.
My name is Christian Umedwe. And I'm a vice-chairman, leader of the community in the Netherlands.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome, sir. Is this, did I my omission? No. Somebody came in. Oh, baby. Yes, I'm going to stand here. Yes.
Your Excellency, colleagues, my name is Guidado Mustafa.
Your excellency, colleagues, my name is Guidado Mustafa, I'm the chairman for Board of Prestige, serving the organization.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
My excellency. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, my name is Chief Lambert T. Wannu, I'm the foremost president-general of Nigeria Associations. And I'm a member of the Board of Advisors, and a politician in your midst. I'm an executive member of Ubuntu Connected Front, which is a political party operating in the Netherlands. I thank them for giving me the opportunity to be in the ballot two years ago, and then we are back again. So I'm an executive member of the political party, which all of us belong to.
I would, I have already, yes, I've introduced the two wonderful gentlemen there, please, sir, can you introduce the song?
Yes, my name is Alex, Minister, thank you.
Next, sir.
Yes, good afternoon, excellency, brothers and sisters, good afternoon. I'm Kabiru Musa, a minister in the embassy handling economic debt, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, great for the time. Thank you, sir. So, okay, any other person outstanding, now we need to be introduced? Okay, so, my name is, I would introduce myself, of course. My name is Anita, Mrs. Anita Hogan-Mack, and I've been living in the Netherlands for a little bit over 10 years. And I used to be the chair lady of All Housewives Association in the Netherlands. But I have now graduated to becoming the chair lady of Concerned Citizens in the Netherlands. And yeah, what I would say is, for some of you who don't really know me, why I say concerned is because I just, I'm one of the very few people that just love being Nigerian, and I don't know if, if they call me to come back to Nigeria again in my next world, would I say yes, truly I would say yes. Because some things have happened to me as a person, that has made me become really proud in Nigeria. For those of you who already know me, I lost my husband almost a year ago, so I'm now a widow. And I live in some obscure village, I don't think anybody would like to go there. But in the 300 years of that church in that village existing, there has never been a location that made them feel like humans love each other than my husband's funeral. That's what they told me. The church has existed for 300 years, they have never seen people come out like that to celebrate or to mourn or to, it was a showcase of Nigerian solidarity. And what else can I ask for? What else can I ask for? And it's been almost a year, and they have never let me go. Those who call me, they know themselves. Some even drive all the way from this Amsterdam to my house, to do my taxes for me. Only in Nigeria who do that. Some just, every other time, drug food in my house, in that village, they just call drug food in my house. And what else can I ask for? What else? I know that a lot of people, we see the bad side, but there's a whole lot of good things that comes with being in Nigeria. And I can give that testimony, that's why I said, I'm the chair lady of all concerned Nigerians in the Netherlands. Thank you very much, God bless all of you, thank you. Now, we are, do we have more questions ready? Because I don't want to do it like, I just want those to feel very free. Who would want to? Go first and ask them questions. Sir, for the purpose of the fact that we don't want to pass mic around, for the obvious reason that we don't want. We will talk aloud, we will. We will decide yesterday.
We can hear each other.
Uh-huh. They've decided, please. Sir? Okay, sir. So we would not pass the mic around, please, for obvious reasons. Yeah, the way we shout or the way we are talking to our family that pisses us off in Nigeria. So the gentleman here says he would wish to kick the ball, get the ball rolling, sir, your question?
Yeah. The ambassador, ministers, the, the other people, all people of the world. My name is Edmund H. Madagor, the president of Igbo Union. If I ask my question, I thank the ambassador for this town hall meeting. And I suggest that if we can be having this town hall meeting two times in a year, despite our various organizations here, because this will bring us together than before. Because mostly, we in Amsterdam, this is our first time of having this town hall meeting. And my question again, mostly goes in request, like last time, about 2018, I was in a meeting at embassy, there is a professor that came there, and he told us that day that there's a money that Nigerian government used to give to either Nigerian diaspora or the students, which I have happy when our brother said that something about student. Is there a way that we can be getting that money back? So that you people can put it into consideration? And secondly, there's a, in Igbo Union, Netherlands, few years back, about two years ago, we are having Igbo lessons here for the Igbo people, Igbo children, and there's some people that are not fluent in the Igbo language. But due to lack of finance, we could not meet up. So now, I'm asking the embassy if it is possible that they can make a way for the Igbo's, the Edo's, the Eurobar's, the Osa, or the other people? A way we can be teaching our children or those that cannot have their, know their language very well, so that our mother tongue cannot be invented? So this is my question for now, thank you.
Okay, sir, the way we are going to do it is, I'm from, sir, I'm from, uh, Haja. Just, just to, just to keep it very coordinated.
Go on, let the questions through, I'll respond to all.
All of the, are you sure they will not mix? Because I have an experience that there will be a repetition somewhere, so if you can.
Let just make it clear that you don't have to repeat what the other person has.
Okay, okay, so, Haja.
Your excellency, sir, I'm a Nigerian by birth, dashed by nationality. In the last past years, we had a wave in the embassy that when you are going to Nigeria, and it's written in your passport, born in Lagos, in Abuja, in Anambra State, or wherever, you are free to get your visa. We had a wave, and it was signed by his former ambassador. But after some years, or a year back, we noticed that this thing has been withdrawn from us. That they will still be asking you that you should bring a passport of someone who is pure Nigeria to be your guarantor before you can go to your own country. So please, your excellency, can you cross-check back to it, please?
Okay, I'm going to take the third question. The third question, sir?
Yes, excellency. My people. Good day all. My question is this, I am Alexander Dynegica, fifth citizen of Igbo land. There is thing that is happening this to our neighborhood and this, so for the Netherlands, that pisses me off. Here, that is one of our brother, they have two children here in Netherlands. You know, most of all this women, when you bring them from Nigeria, or when they came to Netherlands, they provoche them, the woman would like to turn up, father is not more a father, before you know it, they team up with the Netherlands. They say, push the man away, you are the owner of the children, now they carry the children and give to the woman. Now, they carry the children to the woman, they say they want to give the woman a house. But the children are Nigerian nationality, they have Nigerian passport, they have ID card, which is a resident permit. Now, the Nigerian government want to do everything on their own, instead of leaving the, the children are going to school here in the neighborhood. They want to transfer the children from here to Zandam or thereabout, they want to put them off this city. Because there is no person to fight, they say Netherlands have to take their course. In this due case, I want to ask, how can Nigerians, your excellency ambassador, run into this mass risk? Because the citizens are Nigerian citizens, and they are Igbo people, so that makes me, I don't sleep good. Thank you, that's my question.
Thank you very much, and because of the weight of these questions, I'm going to say the ambassador should respond to the first three questions, because I think they are quite heavy questions. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, I think these, basically underscore why we are here, is to try as much as possible to provide answers to some of the challenges that have involved us, and what the embassy can do. Some of the questions you asked specialize in the sense that, that's why I have my desk officers here, so that the ones that I cannot provide answers to, they wait. Now, first, the need for town hall meeting, yes, that's the reason we are gathered here. And it is my fervent belief that it will be a continuous process, whether I am here or not. We have already set up a timeline, a timetable. We have planned that after here, we'll go to Thibaut, you said? Breder, you know, so let's hope, it might not be immediately after this, but the process has been set in place. I have a fervent belief in dialogues, you know, having been in management of people for so many years, I know the importance of dialogue, it can practically solve every challenge in human relationship. And so, we'll continue to promote that, we'll continue to encourage the embassy to have these regular meetings with our people. Because you cannot lead in isolation, you cannot lead without getting necessary feedbacks from the people that are leading. It's part of the challenge we have about leadership, when people are locked in there, they don't get feedback from the people you're leading, you create gap. And so you don't know whether you're going the direction the people want you to go, you just feel that you're doing the right thing. But you cannot do the right thing when the so-called right thing is not in line with what the people want you to do. And that is the, that underscores the need for this sort of engagement from time to time. So I can assure you that it's an important aspect of our citizen diplomacy, to continue to meet with Nigerian citizens in Netherlands, find out what their challenges are, explain to them the extent we can go in solving some of these things. Because we've discovered that in some missions, people who destroy buildings, flags, somebody who took a flight on his own from Lagos to Indonesia, for instance, in the process, you have no documents for being there. They come to arrest you, you jump through the window, you fall and die, people go to the embassy and begin to fight. There is nothing the embassy can do about that if they are not aware of your existence in that city. You know, part of what we have even discussed with my team is the need for us, just as the register with you, that's what UNP will be doing for us. Those who are willing can also register with the embassy, just say that you are here, give us your contacts, give us your details. If you have charities that we can deal with, we'll help you. The embassy can always come in when your case is within the framework of legality. If you've not broken the law, we will never, never allow you suffer when you've been taken advantage of. But when you do not obey the local laws, and you engage in criminality and things that we cannot defend, we cannot come to your aid, we cannot, because, because, I mean, the embassy is a legal institution, it's a rule-based institution. Our powers, our duties are where defined by law. They are defined by all kinds of international instruments. They are defined by the Vienna Convention of 1961, they are defined by our own local, by the local laws of Netherlands, they are defined by the instruments that sent us here. And so, people think that we can do magic, we can do magic, we'll act within the confines of the law. And so when you are on the side of the law, we will come to your aid. But when you are not on the side of the law, there is absolutely nothing we can do. And that is, and that underscores the importance of this kind of dialogue. Because some people, in fact, some people even expect the embassy to buy coffee when people die. And help you put it in plate and take it back. It's not part of our work. Part of it is what you have mentioned here, let me take it too, that in the time past, you have had a sort of a language group or studies for Igbo, right? You didn't say who organized it, you know, I'm sure it's not the embassy. Because the embassy is Pan-Nigeria, the embassy deals with Nigeria. We don't deal with the various ethnic compositions that make up Nigeria. If we have to do that, it means that we'll be organizing language courses for well over 300 language groups. I'm sure you don't even know my own language, where I come from in Nigeria. I come from one of the smallest ethnic groups in the country. A limited language, I'm sure you've never heard about it in your life. And so if I, and so if I have to do that to get engaged in teaching languages, you know, but at your own individual level, I think it's a good thing. At your own individual level, it's a good thing, that I have the background to understand the importance of our mother tongue in bringing up our children. It's very important, because no matter what you do, we are second speakers of English. We can never compete with original owners of the language. Because the tendency is for us to think in our mother tongue and translate to English. And so you have like a dual process of attaining the same energy. So, word over, even in science and all of that, those who start in their own mother tongue have a head start over others, who have to learn the language before getting to do things with it. And that's, that's why I say Chinese, for instance, Japanese, the Dutch, the English people, they have a head start, because even their culture, their science, their technology is in their language. So it's important also that we teach our children, and we teach ourselves, because I can imagine that even most of us sitting here, I can challenge some of you, you cannot even speak your own language, much more our children. So it's a re-challenge, I support the idea of encouraging our children to learn our languages. So that's for me, it's purely out of the threshold of the embassy, it should be individual efforts. Then money for students, I'm hearing that for the first time. Yes, Kabiru, you should be in position to tell us if there's any money for students. I'm not aware of it, I don't know. Are you aware, you man? No, I'm not aware, you can you can be sure that if there were that kind of budget for students, I will be one person that will want to be so forward in ensuring that it gets to where it goes, because uh I I know what it means, I have been a student union leader, I used to lead the MC back in those days at the university, we're the ones who cause trouble and they clap for us. You know, so it's my constituency, you know, I I mean, I've been student union activist, so anything that will help in promoting the course of students, I'll always support it. So, um I'm not aware of any such money, not aware of any such budget provision for that, and so uh we don't have it. Then, um Madame talked about there used to be waiver for those with Dutch passports when they are traveling. I will get uh Dida, where is Dida?
Sorry, Your Excellency.
Yes.
When it is written, your place of birth as a Nigerian.
Yes.
Then there was a waiver signed by Excellency, placed in the embassy. Every Nigerian who held the last two years um town hall meeting knew about it and uh.
Okay, uh I've been at some town hall meeting last year, I've been here since two thousand seventeen.
They are there, last three years.
Okay, so uh Dida, Dida has been any such um waivers for um Nigerians with Dutch passport but an indication of a place of birth in Nigeria, that's what she's saying, so clarify that.
Your Excellency, sir. Your Excellency, fellow Nigerians, uh good afternoon. I'm I'm not aware of any such waiver. But just as Excellency Excellency said earlier, there is a new visa regime now in which the Nigerian government has handed over the issue of acquisition of biometrics of applicants who want to travel to Nigeria. So we have virtually nothing to do now with the issue of the collection of the monies. OIS, which is called, the company called OIS. They're the ones you go to, you do applications there, they collect your biometrics. Or we just send it back to us once you have fulfilled the conditions, we issue out the visa. So there is, I'm not aware of any such agreement that Nigerians whose place of birth is anywhere in Nigeria are given waivers. You see, the system is that, the new system is that the the application itself, it works with nationality. So when you apply for a visa, it and you indicate the nationality there, it automatically gives you a fee, which you go and pay. So there is no, it's not constructed in the way that maybe you say if there's a clause, if your date of, if your place of birth is any time in Nigeria. I don't think there's anything like that. But what I'll advise, maybe through the uh the UNP, you can make the request that you need a waiver, then if it's Excellency can maybe phone to Nigeria for that, but and that's what I, but there is no, there's nothing like that.
No, Your Excellency, there is a misunderstanding, what I mean, there is a waiver.
Place of birth is Nigeria.
We pay, we pay. The waiver is only to say that we don't need, I don't have to be going around, do you have a Nigerian passport, can you stand for me? That is an attachment to the visa, that you need a Nigerian to stand for you, either from or in the embassy.
Yeah, it's a requirement.
On that is.
Uh, it's still there, sir. But sir, just to let me know, but we have been assisting Nigerians. If a fellow Nigerian there, who can just identify you, well, I know we have been doing that, sir, when in formal regime. Once you can just identify yourself, and we even allow some to just write letter of themselves and just say, I'm a Nigerian from Suro State or local government, and we accept, we have been doing that.
Okay, and so your, so your waiver is the. So you don't have problem with that, but I do know that, uh legally speaking, I know that for the Dutch, they don't answer to us citizenship. Do they? If you're married to, okay, because for us, our country, we we have both citizenship in Nigeria, okay? Because my understanding initially, okay, if you're married to a Dutch uh citizen. All right, so your your question is being clarified, your answer is being given. That is then the last uh question I have on my list, is the one on a Nigerian couple, yes? That um said his two children are taken away from him and because of the work, that's also a domestic, that's a domestic issue. Um, except in situations where the rights in any way of either of the parents is being infringed upon, that we can help in ensuring that something is done otherwise. That's a totally uh internal domestic matter. I do not see, except, um Consular, I accept you have anything to say about that sort of situation, otherwise, uh for me, is entirely a domestic issue. The embassy will not or does not get involved in domestic matter. Except, like I said, where we rights are involved, uh there has been from the level of um uh abrogation on the rights of the person, yeah, we can get to the authorities to protect your rights. You know, but from the story you have related to us here, it's entirely a domestic uh matter. You know, so we'll encourage those involved to to find an amicable way to resolve it. Except uh except there is an angle to it that will require um professional rights, that's where we'll come in.
Uh, if you, according to you saying, uh something like right, what I'm trying to say is, we are Nigerian. It's a man who or or um married, they are not even married, they they live together, they have children, they wanted to marry, but the woman can not have one, no, the man says no one. Then uh the the woman went to the government, the the government told them to bring the children, they fought the children, they give the woman hotel, from there, they took the rights from the man, the man, the man doesn't have the children, doesn't give the children anything. And then, before you know it, they said they had, carried the children, leave us alone.
Let let me just say that, yeah, before you come in, let me say that uh clearly, you know that the Dutch laws have so much, so much, um and and it's too elastic for protecting children and women. And so it also means that for Nigerian men who are here, you have to be very careful, it's it's not in Nigeria where you report the woman to the police and police will return, uh arrest the woman. This is Europe, and so it's the laws are here that in Europe, first, uh they protect the children. And after that, they protect the women. And after, those are the uh ones with the biggest, with most important sensitive rights. And after that, of course, they protect their dogs. Before, before the men. So that's, that when I talk about local laws, that's the reality of the local law here. And so we we just have to be careful, um they have been related cases like that, even in US, where some of our Nigerian men bring women, train them, and they expect that you make a kingdom uh pay out out of the women you have trained. It's not the same in Europe and America. You know, when you train people, you train them because you want to improve upon their lives, not because you want to take advantage of uh the training that you have given. So I think it's a bit of um understanding uh the different cultures that we come from. And it's part of what this sort of gathering should also teach us, or also direct or ask the UNP to educate our people on some of these local laws and cultural differences. So we don't fall into this sort of situation. You know, here, you cannot hit your child, your own child, you cannot. But in Nigeria, we flock very, very, very well, and you're there, you recess, or you don't try that here. If you do it here, it's the law that will recess your own edge. You see, so we need to understand some of it, these cultural nuances, so that we don't fall victim. So I would encourage you, take this as part of your, yes, part of your responsibility, to find time to educate our people on how to cope with some of these things, how to behave well to their wives, because here women have so much power, so much power. And so you just have to be lucky that they don't give the power to a woman that will take advantage of you. So those are the things that you have to learn, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Hold on, Madame, there was, uh, hold on. I actually wanted to summarize in that way. And um just a quick one, uh I heard when you were saying something about financial situation for, I remember that meeting very well. It was not related to the embassy, it was some kind of propaganda by the former N A A, you know, on trying to throw some juicy jar carrots out there to set the Nigerians in some kind of uh information that this money is somewhere in the embassy cashed. I remember very well, so it's not true, and it has been, it has been refuted so many times, and I'm glad it was still beginning. Because definitely, for you to bring it up, that is still, the information is still out there. You know, so it is absolutely was back then to create some kind of discord. Some information was pushed out to some sector of Nigerians that some monies was being given out to students and all that. And thanks for bringing the topic, Mr. Ambassador. Um, now I'll go to the next section of question and answer, you raised up your hand, but I will take you in this first.
Okay.
Madame, yes.
Good to hear everyone, and my name is Colin Oboma. I'm from Anambra, Oka, to be precise, I'm a journalist by profession. Please, I have a question to Ambassador. Ambassador, please, I want to, it's a kind of question and it's a kind of suggestion. Um, I want to plead you, for you to use your good offices, to put at least notice board or nice post where people can write their their problems. Because it's causing a lot of harm to Nigerians in Netherlands, not only Netherlands, in whole Europe. Because I have some people who ask me a question that as a journalist, I should ask the question, because when you tell me, then I'll communicate to them, because they can reach you. So I I I I plead for you to have notice board and where people can write their maybe suggestions and their problems, because some people comes to the embassy, of which I noticed it when I came. But when I came, they treated me good, but other people, they do not. There was a woman, a case of a woman who came with four children, came from all the way from another European country. Because probably there was a problem there, and the woman had to solve the issue. And in front of the whole thing, they took the woman's children, four kids. So it pissed me a lot when the woman was crying and wrote to me and people were calling me, what are we going to do it? Because they came for the passport, I don't know what come over the people there, don't know what they said, they started making trouble, they didn't do the passport ask, when do. Then before the issue, the kingdom has come into the the children, that is that one question. Another question is that I had a problem about four years now, going to five years. I wrote to the embassy, embassy did not responded. I went to the embassy, the only person, the ambassador, the ambassador spoke to me that they are going to come to the court. Find that he will send somebody to come to the court, I didn't see no one. When the judge, five judges were seated, they said, where is Nigerian embassy? Because they said they are going to be there. That was, it's two times, two, three years now, then no one was there. Last two, last year, that was twenty nineteen, I went to the embassy, it was Ambassador White who felt so bad about the issue and said that he would look into the matter and to do something. Because my sons, they have Nigerian passport, and I registered them as Nigerians before they have European passport. So I don't know why when, if Nigerians will have problem like that, they will not come to the person's rescue to do the ones they supposed to do. If it's not that I committed crime, why they took my kids away? This is five, got into five years. And they said if Nigeria come, the case would have been finished, but they didn't appear. So that is why I, that is by the way, I took the case to European court. So now, what I'm trying to ask for another person, if this thing occurs, how can you boast that you are Nigerian? How can you say I'm from Nigeria? I I feel ashamed, when the five judges asked me, where are Nigerian embassies, the one people they send? I told them, I don't know, I have to go back there, thank you very much.
Sorry, uh so that we put this in proper perspective, because uh since I have been here, um end of twenty seventeen, there's one thing I have been very careful about, is our Consular image. They will tell you, my officers could tell you, that one problem with me is not to deal with our people with the required um respect that is due them. So I'd like you to give uh some details to it, because I'm hearing this for the first time. If there is any office idea that you meant, uh because I've been here two years ago, that you meant why you were having this challenge and they were supposed to be in court and they were not in court, is that also?
Uh, sorry, 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 Madame, Madame.
Uh, don't worry.
Please, can you just sit down a bit?
No, 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 that's great, that's great.
Oh, okay, Madame, that based on, based on the beginning of this program, you said, let's be very specific. So if, like the Ambassador is here, if you met any specific officer and discussed any specific person, please can you say now or forever?
I said the Consulate was there, that they, they referred me, that they showed me the person, said, this is the person that uh assisted you.
You remember eighty eight?
I don't know, I did, which year?
Which year?
I went two times, I went twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, I remember vividly.
So it's all right.
Wait, wait, the woman, that tall lady, I forgot her name, that was doing a passport history, from Igbo state. She knows the story. So they told me they are going to bring some people, that was why I told the court that people from Nigeria are coming. Even the the witnesses, they were waiting, they couldn't see nobody. Then that one, that one is by the way, they, so there be another issue, the the pressing point. Someone went, maybe a group of people or organization go to Nigerian embassy, take a child and make Nigerian passport, which is very, very vital, they can take your child anywhere in the whole world. They make Nigerian passport without the mother, the father of the said child, which is wrong. They went to Nigerian embassy to do passport for my child.
Okay, hold on, let uh, let the immigration officer say they are Nigerian. So let's, let's get to the bottom of it, yes, George.
Your Excellency, George, I'm very aware of the case, and I'm very glad that she said it herself, that we treated her very well. I'm very glad you said that. I remember we had two interviews with you on the issue. We followed up, sir, and when they were going to have the court session, I was never aware of it like that. We were not informed that on social date, the embassy was invited, we have not received any correspondence direct. But I'm very happy that when you came, we treated you, we listened to your case, we followed up, and when they were supposed to go to court, we never knew. Because if I had known, I would have definitely followed up.
I brought the court letter, before, but I have two people who are my witnesses, Mrs. Woman is a Nigerian, is from Berlin.
Okay, let me, okay, let me clear that, usually, eh, uh, okay. Hold on, hold on, now listen, usually, any correspondent on court cases comes to me as their ambassador. I will now mean it to the desk officer responsible for that. So if you are saying that you brought the letter to who, I should be the person that will get the letter. The embassy email and all correspondences are directed to me first. I look at the uh the the content, the issue, and I mean it to who is responsible for that issue. And I follow up, they all know, I have made it very clear. In fact, some of you will confess that you receive prompt response from correspondence to the embassy now. Because I make it clear, by here complaint, sometimes people send me messages to my 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 personal, they DM me to say, look, I have written that, I'll call the officer, and they know, I don't take it kindly with them. And so uh you probably did not handle uh your your issues well, because there is no way that I will be aware that you're, uh an officer is supposed to come to court to clarify probably the citizenship of. that you're, uh, an officer is supposed to come to court to clarify probably the citizenship of your children or their identity and they will not go. They definitely, I have not received any such correspondence. That's why I'm asking, you said it's aware. And so, uh, sometimes, um, it's the clarity of communication that is the problem. Just communication problem. Let me make it very clear to you. There is no way the embassy will not stand by you if you have a clear case of you being, um, deprived and requires our attention. There is no way we will not be there for you. And so if it's a situation that we can stay savage as we speak, you discuss with Didel, whatever that I need to do, I will do it for you. But please, in issues like this, I will advise you, come straight to me. Come straight to the, uh, if you have such letters, bring it straight to the ambassador, whether I am there or not. Nobody will go to court in the embassy without the express directive of the, of the ambassador. Nobody, nobody. And so when you need some of these, that's why I'm happy we have this sort of dialogue today. So that, uh, if it's so difficult for you, meet the chairman. Straight away you will call me. That's why this sort of, uh, community meeting is very important. So we can, we can be there for one another. We can be there for ourselves. You have this sort of problem, reach him. If you're finding it difficult to reach me, reach Donut or reach, uh, Dr. Gidado. They will reach me and I'll send the officer that is responsible for that sort of matter to wherever it's supposed to be, you know. So like I have mentioned, if it's a case that we can still do something about, you let me know. But I've never heard about it, just hearing about it. And I should be the first to know because these letters are supposed to come to me. They are supposed to come to me directly and I will mean it to them. And I follow up and ensure that they are, they do what they are supposed to do. So if you think that, um, something we can still do about the situation as of now, let us know and we will offer whatever assistance we can to you.
Thank you very, very much, your excellency. Um, I would say we go on. But madam, um, I really would advise you to have a chat later on. And if there is any kind, of course, I understand how the mobile works here once they have stuck something. It's, uh, but talking about it will go a long way to at least educate, uh, the embassy more. And something very, very, very crucial. Yeah, of course, when 2008, the association was also not in good standing. And you know, so we as Nigerians, we've also been struggling as a group. So we didn't even know who to go to. We didn't know who to discuss such matters with. Because I know, I'm not trying to boast, but Nido, for instance, uh, would be quite, uh, would have direct. Sometimes when something just, I'm like, okay, we don't want to go through the normal protocol. Just the president just calls or send you the, the, the draft. I, I don't know, but I would advise everybody here, if you can collect his, his, his complimentary card. He's the only one, he, he responds. If you collect his complimentary card and send him a message. It's not to spite anybody in the embassy, but it's just that, it's, it just gives you that, you know, quick, good feeling that somebody is, is Nigeria problem, he responds. That I, I can give, um, thank you very much, sir. And that I can give testimony to. So please follow up, sir. You wanted to ask a question.
Okay. His excellency, sir.
Yes.
My name is, uh, Dekeen John Osayende-Licency Amadas. I'm the vice chairman of United Nigeria Platform. Um, one thing I have discovered is that most of us need that integration. Integration is very important to know how to dot I and cross the T. And unity is also strength. I want to, uh, use this opportunity to talk to my fellow Nigerians that, uh, uh, very soon, we are going to organize a dialogue on integration. Like the issue of our sister. If our sister know what to do, like we are now on boards. You can always call on us. It's not all issue you have to call the embassy direct. We can be able to help ourselves. What we cannot do for ourselves, then we call the embassy. And also, sir, since our inauguration last year, all those, uh, results we have been witnessing, we have been doing it with our own finance individually. And I want to use this opportunity to say that if we can be getting subvention from the embassy, monthly or quarterly, we can perform more magic. So, sir, look into that. Thank you very much.
Okay, sir. Um, I'll go to the next question. Please, I, I notice this side has nothing to any questions. Any question from this side? Questions? Okay, sir.
I don't have a question, rather a comment.
Okay, sir.
Um, I was part, I've been attending what the UNP has been organizing. And I will advise every Nigerian, wherever you are, to key in. Because all the things they were teaching and directing our people and the projects that are emanating from all the things that are being done there. Most of them, the problems we are having or receiving now, after attending those sessions we have through our UNP, it becomes very, very, very obvious that, uh, the divorces, the family breakups, the squabbles, the family violence, the, the, the problems we as migrants, uh, Nigerians in particular in this country, what we have is pure ignorance. That is absolutely pure ignorance how to live. Okay, you come into a country, you're not speaking the language. You bring somebody else. You don't even know your land. You brought in somebody who doesn't also know anything. And you watch TV and all of you are leaving TV. My fellow Nigerians, please, please, please. And I can tell you, this is the first time in this country after twenty eight years that the Nigerian organization has been able to put something down that will benefit every Nigerian. It is very, very, very coming from. I've been, I've been attending that program from Amsterdam with my wife. Apart from that the fact that it sustains you in your workplace, if you are in a leadership position. It also taught us that the projects that came up, which I will also be part of them, part some of them, uh, with, with the union. Is that this, uh, problem, uh, problem that we have now, we can be able to help our people. We can teach them, when you come in, we will receive you. Tell us you are in this country. We direct you. We tell you the dos and don'ts. Who help you to get to know your land, your standing, get the understanding of the language and how the people think. Dutch is not a difficult society. But we come with our own idea and we want to place it upon them. It will never work. So there is, there is a standing now where all of us can key in and move everybody together, even in your place of work. I can attest to that. So I thank everyone, but let us now work together. It's Nigeria now. It's not Nigeria before. And my excellency is doing a wonderful job. I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you very much. No, no, there's still questions.
Okay.
Uh, because right now we have just one question. That was just an observation and information. Uh, pastor? Pastor Dominic, sorry. There's so many pastors here.
Your Excellency, sir. I'm a fellow Nigerian. Um, for some of us that didn't come early, when the ambassador was speaking, he made mention of, uh, supporting the UNP. That he said, I'm always with UNP to support them. And, um, he also said something to us that, uh, in some couple of months to come, he will be leaving us. And then we know all, we all know how it works in Nigeria. When a new government comes, things changes. So I am pleading if his excellency will use his good office to put it in black and white. So that whoever that is coming, at least if he can, uh, they can read that, uh, they are going to help UNP. So that UNP will be your eye to the Nigerians, but you cannot include them in your budget so that they can run very well. That is my only question, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, that, thank you very much. I will take the next, last second question. Sir, give her a question. John Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Your Excellency, I'm a member of all Nigerians in Netherlands. My name is, uh, Chris John Paul Idogere. Uh, I want to ask this question if it's going to be possible. Because, uh, I'm a member of, uh, UNP and I'm also the coordinator of Amsterdam. We have a lot of people that has problem with passport. And perhaps they have previous passports somewhere else that, uh, was withdrawn from there. Now they found yourself in this country and they are scared of police report. Is it any way they can have waiver? Because I had this telephone call from different people. I want to do passport, but what do I do? How do I, I cannot go to police, I cannot get police report because I'm scared. So how do we help these people that want to obtain Nigerian passport and they don't want to go to get police records or?
Thank you very much, sir. I will take, um, on this side, on this side again, on this side again, uh, I shift. Okay, sir.
Good afternoon. Your Excellency, sir. My name is Fred Hiriaro. I'm the president of Hedo Community in Rotterdam and also the secretary to the Board of Advisors to the UNP. My question is, it, to the visa issuing of visas to Nigerians that are, that have acquired their Dutch passport. Yeah, from what we understand now, we have to do biometrics in order for you to obtain a visa. Uh, this biometrics, is it at every point that you are applying for a visa? That is one. If it is, is it possible, if we apply for the visa at the very first time to get at least one or two or three years visa? Instead of going back every time you want to apply, you want to go home. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for that question. Any new question? Any, okay, sir.
Good evening, your excellency. My name is, uh, Kebo Stanleya. My question goes like this, um, it's about, um, some of us that are into business. Uh, I could remember some years back, I have a product that I want to brand. And to get the, uh, the document with the, the company here for legalization, I have to pay some certain amount of money, which is, I find it a little bit high. And I tried to confront the company and they told me that this money is being paid to the embassy. They are not the one responsible. And if I have to remember, it's about a thousand five hundred or so that the company have to take from, from us, we Nigerians that are trying to brand a product that will maybe make an impact to our country. And why should we pay such a month just to legalize the documents? When all the documents are authentic and they are all good documents. But we have to pay this amount of money to the embassy.
Thank you very much, sir. I think, um, I, I think, um, do we have any other questions? Okay, so we will now, uh, allow the ambassador to respond to this.
If, uh, let's take also we can now
Okay.
do this, uh, question and ask if there are other questions.
Other, if I say you reach them. Because we run a game of confidence, man. Uh, we run a game of confidence.
Okay, uh, I get that's the whole idea. It's happening after a very long while. But please, uh, don't crucify the embassy today. Um, and, uh, first, the question on, um, okay, I think that has been taken. Okay, it's about the suggestion box, uh, that, uh, the lady, uh, talked about. I think we took just one part of our question. We didn't take the other part, which is, uh, ensuring that we have, um, a box of something which people can make suggestions to ensure that, uh, we improve services to our countrymen and women. Okay, that is noted, but I know that we have a website. Um, whatever that, um, you need to find out about what we are doing. But I will say, um, Didel, we have a suggestion box at the, yes, we have one. So what I will find out is if it's effective. If it's not, make it effective and give an indication that people can make suggestions in the box to ensure that we improve services to, to Nigerians here. Then the question about, uh, giving a subvention to, to UNP. Again, we don't have any, um, project provision for that, but you can, you can attest to the fact that from time to time, when you have programs, you reach the embassy. We've always done, uh, the best that we can given a very precarious financial situation. For me, we will continue to do that. Then if, um, it's a question of setting up a mechanism for either quarterly or annual, uh, subvention, we will look into that. But in the meantime, we assure you that we will continue to support your programs because, um, uh, UNP is, is our baby as it were. Uh, is our best means of reaching out to Nigerian citizens here. So the platform is as important to us just the way it is to you. So we will continue to do whatever we can, uh, to support it. That also, uh, speaks to the issue of ensuring that, uh, whoever is succeeding me also keys into, um, the platform that we have set. There is no ambassador that will not like the organized platform that we have now. It's practical because he needs it or she will need it to get access to. Yes, but of course, it's going to be part of my, um, handover notes to ensure that, uh, to inform whoever is coming to take over from me that we have an organized platform. Um, those that I will leave behind will ensure that there will be a seamless, um, transition or understanding of ensuring that whoever will take over from me was to engage with you. Uh, that is not going to be a problem at all. We've, we've gone past that level long, long ago. We've gone past the level where at this point we begin to talk about the legitimacy of platform for any person to deal with. We've gone past that level. We have a very strong platform now. And like I told Donat, um, my experience, what makes you legitimate more is your work and not recognition of powerful people. It's the work you do. It's the thing, it's how you affect the lives of people. That's what makes you powerful. And so when you walk with where people will identify where you is, there is no two ways about it. So, um, we will continue to ensure that we leave, um, a lasting impression about you to whoever is coming to, uh, take over. Then the important question about passports. So undocumented Nigerians, I'd like Didel to once again take that question. Now you understand why I'm always, uh, picking on you at the embassy, you see now? So it's also, uh, a lot of question because you know what I discovered is that you, you, you don't understand that Didel, that is, uh, heading the, um, immigration and the, uh, consular issues with, uh, with, uh, Maxwell. They are like the adverts of the mission. So I've told Didel that anything you do wrong, they, they don't know me. They accuse me. Oh, the embassy is this, the embassy is that. But we have done a lot in improving the, uh, quality of service we render to Nigerians. In fact, uh, the biggest, the biggest challenge we have now is that people leave. people leave other European countries to come to Netherlands. You can testify to that because they, because we have legitimized ourselves through working well. That's what I said. So when you work well, people will identify with you. In fact, at a point, we were even getting scared that, um, uh, our big legs and passports are the time that we run out of stock. We had to devise a means of keeping for those in Netherlands because people were coming more from other European countries. And so he ran to me and said, look, we are running into problems. We have few stock. I said, no, 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 keep our people in Netherlands first before we deal with people coming from, um, other parts of Europe. So we, we've always worked with that understanding that yes, we owe Nigerians everywhere some level of responsibility. But our immediate constituency will be, always will be Nigerians in Netherlands. So I'd like you to answer that question on what you do with, uh, Nigerians who are not documented but have problems, uh, with passports within the legal framework of, uh, understanding with the host.
Your excellency, sir. If I heard you very well, you said issue of lost passports. They don't have lost passports, yes.
And they are scared going to police, to get the police report. So the police report goes to they ask you if you don't give proper explanation, you can run into trouble. Or they say, this is not our passport, we are not giving you police report because it's not for Netherlands. So we have such cases around right now.
Okay, uh, if you look at the website very well, one of the requirements to reissue a lost passport is a police report. And it's for obvious reasons. If you lose, for example, if you just lose a document at a crime site and the police get to pick it, you are a chief suspect. So it's very important that if you lose any document, you have to report it to the police. And especially something like an identity document, like a passport. And it's one of the requirements, if you look at the website, it's a requirement that you must provide a police report. So we can have something to document for yourself and also for the government that this passport was missing, but another one was reissued because of the police report that was given. If you look at the site too, there are different categories. Reissue, lost case, it's clearly stated there. And one of the requirements is that you should bring a police report. So it is very difficult for us now to bend that kind of rule that involves legality of a document. We have cases where, for example, um, some documents were received by either the Dutch authorities or even some other European countries. If such authorities can send a document to us stating that they collected the document and either it got missing with them or something, we can always reissue. And we've had one or two cases like that too, where they committed themselves and said they collected the passport from the Nigerian, but they seem to have, they didn't commit themselves, but they just said it's with them. But that we can issue another passport. We can use that in lieu of a police report. So I think that, uh, that's, we can only bend the law. It comes to do with that.
This, this very particular aspect, um, to people I know. They are, according to them, I told them to tell me the truth. And they said their passport was withdrawn in Germany. The police say, when you are ready to go to Nigeria, come we give you at another way to Netherlands. Just ask me a question.
Uh, let's remind me.
Thank you, thank you. No, 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 we're in the testicle.
Then the other guy said he lost passport in France. He wanted to go, uh, to get the police report. But the police denied the police report. Maybe the passport is not for us. Go to your embassy and go and get the report. We are not giving you police report. So that also has a problem. So in this situation, what is?
Okay, I, I think that, uh, the question is a straightforward one and you have received a straightforward answer. Like I said at the beginning, there is no way as a mission we will undercut the law. It's impossible. It's impossible. We were not. And so if you're part of the Nigeria, you know it that if you lose your document, if your document is missing, you must obtain a police abstract.
Even in Gaza.
Yes, everywhere. So I mean, putting it on the embassy as if the embassy is not supporting you when you lost your item and all, that's a requirement. And so for the guy who said, um, in France, right?
Yeah.
Why come to us? Why your document was, uh, lost in France? He, he doesn't have to call you. He will call people there and ensure that the problem is resolved. Yeah, but it, but, but he was, uh, missing in France. And then he comes, you see, that's the problem. That's why this sort of gathering and what UMP is planning, like, uh, one of our brother said, it's important that we educate our people on all of this. You know, and you, even you as a leader, when you get caused like that, you will explain, make it very clear to them that when this is the situation, you require to go to the police. I understand the difficulties in going to the police. Now you cannot transfer that difficulty to the embassy because we cannot, we cannot be engaged in any unlawful activity. It will affect the image of the country. We cannot do it. Yes. So, um, the final question I have here before we take another set is on the payment for, is it payment for branding of product or legalization of products? They are two different things. Legalization, okay. Um, you answer, okay.
Your excellency, sir.
Yes.
In the, in the consular section there, there's a, on notice board, there's a schedule of fees which you should pay for every service obtained. And one of those is legalization. Well, if you come to the embassy, the fee is there. But when you go to somebody, when you go to somewhere and he charges you, you cannot also blame the embassy for that. Because in the embassy, legally, it was with six hundred and fifty euros. So if you went to someone who offered you services and he charges you for that, the embassy is six hundred and fifty euros that you need to pay for legalization fees. So, and so most times, because you know, this, most times it's meant for foreign companies who want to go to Nigeria to do business. So they have to pay that fee to the embassy. But if you as a Nigerian now, you went to somebody to do it for you, well, it's, uh, maybe it's something for your charges. You have to come directly then.
Um, sir, uh, thank you very much, sir. You wanted to quickly refute something or make something clear, please?
Um, on this note, I would like to maybe have your counter because I still have another product that I'm in process and it's, it goes like this, that the company you are dealing with will ask you all the necessary documents for you to brand the product. So the company will now, uh, charge you a certain amount of money that is going to the embassy. Like you said, it's six hundred and fifty. I'm happy to hear that. But normally, the company is always asking you a thousand five hundred. So on this note, I would like to have a, a.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Uh, that was, in that story, sir, sorry, sorry. In that, I, I know, um, in that space, uh, we have ended a second session of questions. I know, I know, I know. We have ended the second session, but didn't notify you.
No, let, let's finish your questions, please.
Sir, I know you want to go. We were, sir, we have you done today. Let's enjoy it.
All right.
Let's enjoy you, please. I, I, I know, I know, sorry, sorry. Because most of the questions coming now are repeated, are, are same people asking the same question. So please, yes, same people asking not the same question, but other questions. So people want to be relaxed and all that. So please, I will be, a, a lot of people have drinks with them, they have things to chew with them. I know, I know, sir, but I would say let's take a ten minute break to laugh. Thank you.
How are you? Um, Alehedi, please go and meet that Wabala, that's a Wabala, or come with that to pastor. Go and meet that pastor because I have one in Washington. That's a one to take an exit away from the Netherlands. And I want you to pray, fire prayer, fire, fire prayers as the man does not take a transfer. And, and Alehedi, because if the man take a transfer, I think what we have built in Netherlands will just kaput. So Alehedi, pray, use empty path for prayer and forgive him for pastor, make him pastor pray. And what I like, I will send a one hundred euro for you. Thank you. Hallelujah. You see, I've been used to church activities too much that, um, for any gathering I approach, I always say hallelujah first. So let me approach this gathering formally. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome all the Nigerians that are here today. At the same time, I would like all the beautiful Nigerian women to clap for themselves. I said women. Yes. Because I know that, you see, when Nigerian women step out, they know they carry last. And when Nigerian men step out, in short now, first in dressing and everything. And today was just supposed to be a, a casual meeting day. But the way I see it now, in short, I am proud to be Nigerian. Um, I have a question for our excellency or a favor. And it goes like this. My excellency, let, let me tell you, I have been an ambassador before. But my ambassadorship was in, not in Nigeria, but it was in Jamaica. So I want to ask him if he can zoom in one way more to ask the federal government of Nigeria if he can transfer me back to Jamaica to meet the Nigerian ambassador. Because I send you the Jamaican people, make me win, win.
Well, if you want to be ambassador of Jamaica, go be the minister of foreign affairs.
When I was in Jamaica, when I, when I, when I, when I bust somebody in there and become tell the people that I'm a boy in the house. Can I understand what I'm talking about? Become tell all the Nigerian Jamaicans in the house, become to tell you. In my state in Jamaica, become notice that the people in Jamaica, most of the Nigerian people in Jamaica are mostly Igbo boy there. When I boy, when I, that is to say, let me break it down like this, most Jamaicans are Igbo's. When I, when I, when I bust somebody in there, when I boy, when I boy, when I boy, when I boy. You see, even if you go to Nigeria, you will notice that most of the people singing reggae are Igbo's. Yes, pick any reggae artist and look at his name. You will see notice that he calls himself Ayana, Ayana, Ayana. But come, come, come tell you the truth, that we only have the Igbo boy that I love them, sing Jamaican music for you. His name is Chido Be. Now, let us leave that section. I have another favor to ask. My dear minister, when I want to ask you, because I want to do, I want a favor. If you can just give me an accommodation, because I was the former minister to India. And in India, they like to be very, very well. Am I expected to go to the ministry of foreign?
Your former minister in India. My duty here is only about Nigeria. I don't know anything about India.
So darling, so darling, my dear minister, I really want to tell you and express my feelings to you. In general, this is not a matter that I'm going to be focusing for very long. I am telling you that it's going to break my heart and it's hurting in my heart. And if I didn't tell you that I want to cry, I want to cry, but I'm telling you I don't know how to cry, so I'm going to put it like this. So whether I see you or somebody, you will be very, very much in country and go back to Nigeria. I am crying and we are going to miss you very importantly. And my need to stay in Netherlands or I was, um, I was deported to Nigeria when I was, um, eight years old. Um, when they gave birth to me in England, the British government found out that they cannot indoctrinate the British system into me. So they advised my parents to take me back to Nigeria. In doing so, they sent me back to Nigeria with a British passport, thank God. And when I was supposed to come back to leave Nigeria, I did not come back with a British passport. I came back with a Nigerian passport, hallelujah. So in my state in Nigeria, the Nigerian people loved me so much. So I picked a notch from Nigeria. For instance, if I ask them a question, say, which tribe they use mobile phone pass? What is, which, what is the answer that will give me? Now Ibo, Nairobi or the Hausa? Ibo. Hausa? Let's take this one, my ambassador. Which tribe do you think uses mobile phone? More than, let's try, Ibo, Nairobi or Hausa?
I, I don't have the statistics.
All of them are. On that, who? Uname, okay. Now listen to this. A Hausa man will hold a mobile phone. And when you call him on the phone, he will just tell you few words. Someone tell, when I, you get that for money, I get that for money, money, I get that. You know, pound to pound, you know, pound to pound, a email for you for good, good rate. Finish. Apart from that, he uses the mobile phone for calculator. To calculate the rate at which it's going to change dollar or pound. That is why Hausa people carry mobile phones. And Ibo man, this is the mini suspense of the phone. And they can, they can, they can, they can give you money, they can, they can, they can. They give you, they don't know, they don't know what that means. See, ten thousand, they can't even, they can't even tell me one time. Ibo man is using on the mobile phone, finish. Highest that Ibo man will go extra is, in there, they go, yeah, but I'm worried. He should have looked at you something. He should have written a letter, have this video for you, just start the war. Finish. Now, the Yoruba man. The Yoruba man. Do we have Yoruba people now?
Be careful.
The Yoruba man.
Before we show you soon.
The phone will first ring. I like, eh, Baba Luca, Baba Luca. Ah, you are look at more, you kill on the motor, you tell it, it's a bit, so far, what's on me? Kill on the motor, eh, Baba Luca, eh, kill in God's share, you pay, dial a long man, yeah, oh, I need flat tire. How many minutes have I used? Yoruba finish you. Eh, flat tire, Lani, eh, check it, make a caniki, eh, I keep making, making it go, Daviki, ah, Daviki da. To go in there, eh, Daviki, you know, I want to, before you, so keep my sorrow. You know, Daviki, kill on the, I want to say, I'm wanting, wanting flat tire, I'm wanting, what's on me? Eh, check it, you do tire, eh, Daviki, what's on you, eh, Daddy, I keep, eh, for caniza, for caniza, oh. Eh, I keep for caniza, why, 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 for, 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 eh, for caniza, so you there, or you there, before you for. eh, I can forcanizer, why, I'm not forcanizer, I'm a forcanizer, so, did they, what did they, before we food? When they gave forcanizer before, eh, forcanizer, you know, say tire, eh, I don't know, eh, eh, I just say tire, eh, I just say tire, eh, who party, eh, you know, say the party, before we cook, Daviki, eh, Daviki, you know, say party, I just say, party, eh, who to first start to see, yeah, it's start to motor, eh, eh, before we food, you're a looker, I can before we food, you're a daddy, phone was a P. Not no battery. Kill him, what's up, kill him, what's up, take credit, yeah. What have I said, that credit has just finished? So, with these statistics I've given you now, before I take my leave, who they use mobile phone for the pass? Thank you very much. Excuse me, where I'm from?
Somalia.
Somalia. Somalia, Nigeria. Somalia, Nigeria.
But the boy, you truly like to be Somalia.
Well, that is why I said I'm for you, saying, when I come from London, I thank God, say, I come with a British passport. But when I was coming back to Europe, I came fully with a Nigerian passport. So that is why I'm saying you, I am proud to be a Nigerian. It does not matter what country or what state I belong, I am a citizen of the Federal Republic of Nigeria.
Yes, so, yes, so, we needed that, we needed that, we needed that, just to demystify, because of Navito said her more, he's a joke. And he will say, let me report, say this guy, they came, he's an ego boy.
I said, he said, he, there are two questions, the one, he said, each time you go, do you have to take biometrics? I said, yes. For now, each time you go, you must take your biometrics. And this is because, it's, 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 as I said, the government has gone into a contract with the company, it's a private company. So we, we, we're not aware of the, the, the terms of the contract with the company, but the Nigerian government has gone into a contract with them. So for now, each time you go, you obtain your biometrics. But, but for those for the duration, I know for some Nigerians, once you obtain it the first time, and I'm sure some of you are, are, will agree with me that, we usually give them six months or one year. When we know that, yes, you are Nigerian, by birth, we can give you that space of applying for more, for more than six months, or even up to a year. But most of them don't do that, because it's more expensive. So they might just claim now that they want it, but by the time they see the, the cost, they now, they now, they withdraw. But we can, once you identify yourself as a Nigerian, and that this is your request, we can always oblige you that. Then we'll advise the company who are taking the biometrics, that the person is going to apply for the multiple entry, either for six months or for a year. And they, when you apply and you pay online, then we issue.
And for that one year, you can be able to go in and ask more.
Yes, it's multiple entry.
Um, sorry, sorry, sir, sorry. Uh, uh, Madam, uh, Ambassador, please, one minute, one, one minute, I'll connect the mic. Yeah, um, uh, with my position as a Reverend Minister and also a community leader, and also a media personnel, uh, I know that this fear among our people, that they cannot go to the police, it's nothing but lies, because I've been working, I've been privileged to work with some of the police. So they also come to my, uh, radio station to, to do some announcement. So one of the crucial thing facing them now is that Nigerians don't normally come to complain. They don't come to, they don't come to them to complain, but there's an EU law now that says that, even if you are illegal, you can still go to the police to complain, lodge your complaint, and they will never arrest you. So the police here in this Amsterdam, they are looking for a way for our people to come. They said, they know very well that sometimes, uh, the armed robbers will come into their homes and, and steal, uh, boggle there, but they don't have the freedom to come, they are so much afraid to come. So please, if you are here, and maybe your passport is missing, you want to go to the police, be very good to go. And if you cannot go alone, please call me, 0684, I will go with you, please.
That's been settled, uh, you know, if we can reach out to her, we will, uh, so now we get to the next, uh, sorry. If you have a comment or question, I'd like to hear. Yes, I need to ask. A question or a comment, a comment about what you said. Okay, please, just hold on, we have questions, let's, let's. Mr. Sir, I will come to that.
I also want to address what you said.
Yes, okay, what do you want to address?
Madam, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Your Excellency, sir, all protocol to be of that. I, I am, uh, one of the, one of the victims of such thing. And I thank God, that I'm here today, to, to the fact that we have a system that works at the embassy. All thanks goes to the gentleman over there, I'm not, I'm not also surprised that you have been calling me. Every time I go there, the team, everybody, you know, wonderful audience, I believe, wonderful. And also, even, I, I even misplaced the passport, passport the second time. I still did the same thing, and also accordingly assisted at the embassy. And thank you very much for all the, to, to, for all the people that don't have, that are not come here to express themselves. I thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you very much, sir.
I want to, at least a town hall meeting, so I really want to, not just about question, questions and answers, but also at the same time, I have any for us to make suggestions, you know, contributions regarding, uh, Nigerians living in the Netherlands. Uh, first of all, I'm Oe, I know my personality and the president of Nigeria Radio here in Amsterdam. And every Friday, we do our program, and I get feedback from a lot of Nigerians, uh, when they call in and ask questions related to our program. Uh, one question that really comes to, uh, to my program from our different districts, they always ask me, why are we, the Nigerians, living abroad, are not eligible to, you know, partake in our general elections in Nigeria? Like, uh, I'm, I'm with the Nigerians, we are having Nigerian passport, for heaven's sake. Just by the fact that we live abroad, and, uh, you know, in the real country, let's take, uh, Amsterdam or Holland, for example, for as a case study. Most of us here are resident here, we have the resident permit, but we are carrying Nigerian passports. So, and, uh, we have our Nigerian embassy here. So I think embassy should have, uh, you know, an important role to play in terms of, you know, cementing that relationship or communications regarding, uh, we having to vote or to partake in our general elections, just by the fact that we live here abroad. You know, it's, it's something that, uh, it's only, uh, a question that's a big clause that we need to address. And, uh, Pastor, the Excellency, could please try to, uh, you know, give us a answer?
Excellency, uh, I listening to the speech of your Excellency, mentions some relevant between Nigeria and the Netherlands, which is has achieved during experience in the Netherlands. Because of the business work and studying deportation of Nigeria in the Netherlands. Who, as one living, this still will not be reversed back?
That's a question, uh, allow that. Can I give my opinion? Yes, offer. No, 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 I don't like it.
Your Excellency, before the pandemic, it was said, and we read it, that Nigerian living in the Netherlands are allowed to get the visa at entrance of the, of the Nigerian, um, port of, port of entrance.
Port of entry.
Yeah, so we want to know, how far is it true?
In Nigeria?
In Nigeria, port of entrance.
That's the question, any other question? Yeah, especially.
Visa or my left hand?
Okay, uh, please, can you ask? Yes, okay.
Your Excellency, sir? Yes.
It's your right.
Yes, even, I keep feeling that Mr. Klay is successful so far. So time does not give me enough time to characterize your achievement so far. Kudos to you, sir. But there's one strategic diplomatic imbalance that we've been trying to struggle with over the years. And I hope you put this one on the, on the list, on the long list of your achievement. You know, they've been enjoying a kind of diplomatic, you know, sir. For instance, in Nigeria, there are some personal and some diplomatic issue that cannot be accomplished in Nigeria, we have to go to Kutun or we go to Ghana. But here, the embassy is in Denah. So if you look at it, it's have been like an amazing, like a accomplishment in their own side. So in diplomacy, you get exactly what you give, why is it one sided?
Your question is not very clear.
Yeah, I know, this is clear.
You don't understand me, sir, I like, uh, white and black, I know what to ask you, but.
I would like how you will factor this into your long list of achievement before you go.
Yeah, it's, uh.
Okay, he has taken you. Okay, uh, another question, this is the last round of question and answer. So please.
Lady now, she has comment.
Yes, yes, uh, I want to give people who haven't asked any question or opportunity, Madam.
Comment, right?
Um, Excellency, I'm still standing on existing protocol. My comment is this, yeah, uh, my comment is this, in the issue of, uh, what, uh, Madam said about Nigeria, the loss of Nigerian passport. I have at least three people last week, because they went to, they went to Amsterdam Sports Police Station, of which I have their names. The police, I went with them practically, so the police told them that they had to go to Nigerian embassy to get a note where they wrote requirements, police extract, before they could give them police extract. I must pass ambassador of him, so I now say, any day that I, yeah, I will get to the ambassador, I will let him know the problem or how, because sometimes when I call, they say, ambassador is not around, he traveled, he's not around, before you know it, they will pass on, they wouldn't appear to it. So what I'm trying to say in effect is this, if there will be a way, ambassador, this is, you are directing this, the way for you to let your people write requirements is just in a sheet of paper. So that anybody that lost passport, the issue of afraid, then when they see it, they say Nigerian embassy, go to, uh, this is requirement, first of all, police extract, because police in Amsterdam, they need document, they say, go and get it in document, I was there. So that is why I'm saying.
I'd just want to know if, as ambassador told her that it's going to go very soon, then go to very continuation of what you have said, sir?
Uh, you know, but, sorry, sorry, my brother, uh, why they are wrong, it has been answered before, he said, yes. No, sir, this is the standard, make your comments, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir, you have comments, sir. What did you say, sir?
Uh, yes, Excellency, uh, I have questions to, to you, sir. Is, um, if there is any Nido officials in this, uh, environment, if you can.
We have Nido representative there.
Nido is she there?
And then she's also here. Yes, Nido and Nido.
And he also?
And also me, Nido.
Okay, and UNDP, data. What is relationship between UNDP and Nido? There are differences between UN, UNP and Nido. First, are you working? Uh, okay, one minute.
All right.
Several times, we Nigerian leaders, if there is any substantive discussion, we are always excluded in the interest of affairs from the Nido.
You mean Nido?
Yes, from the Nido. And I witnessed some issues where, uh, Abasonjo came to this country, and I spoke with Abike W, that is there any subvention? Ab, Abike W is the chairman of Nido in this.
When Abasonjo came here?
No.
After Abasonjo, there is no provision for other Nigerian organization here. After, I spoke with Abike W, because we have been spending our own money to make sure that our community move very fast.
Okay.
Now, I told Abike W, is there a need subvention for community in every country? She said, yes. And I called Bandi in Germany, that what are the provision for the community leaders? Because they are only taking a year of Nido. So I want to read to your notice, if there is anything in collaboration with community organization like this and Nido, because Abasonjo said, Nido is only organization that recommends in diaspora. Now, today, everywhere Nido is being, where we call a community meeting like this, I thank all Nido officials are here. We have been on this since, since about seven years or eight years, formation of Nigerian organization here. So if there is any sources, I want Nido officials to answer that special for your ambassador's.
Okay.
To be clear, you're saying Nido gets some national support? No, 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 I just wanted to be clear.
Don't worry, I.
Okay, you get the question.
Is there any other question, next thing.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's, let's.
So that will be the, the last, okay.
Let me, uh. No, let's, let's, uh, take every question we need, because we don't, um, keep everybody waiting for too long. First, um, the DJ asked about, um, diaspora election, participation in election. Uh, if you are, uh, up to date, we, the government of Nigeria is in the process of making a legislation, is championed by Nido, to ensure participation of Nigerians in diaspora in elections. That, I can confirm to you, is still within the process of, uh, the legislation to make that a reality. Uh, we have, um, we've received a lot of, um, a lot of, um, agitation, as it were, on this matter. Uh, Nigerians abroad, Nigerians in diaspora, have been clamoring to be part of, uh, the election process, because they are stakeholders, uh, they contribute a lot to the economy of the country. Um, your remittance is a long, uh, form, significant part of, uh, of our economic activities. And so, a, a, a lot of people are thinking that is unanimity, that, uh, that sort of, uh, thing should happen, that Nigerians in diaspora should be part of determining who governs of back home. And I, I can tell you that that process is on. Um, quick goes to the, speaks to the question about the place of Nido in the scheme of things. Now, Nido is the constitutional umbrella of Nigerians in diaspora. Nido is the one, the organization that is recognized by the constitution of Nigeria as the umbrella platform for Nigerians in diaspora. But for the purposes of integrating everybody culturally, we have these other platforms, and that's what, um, UNP does. You, uh, Nido, from what I have seen, since I have been here, is, is more of professional, um, people. But, yeah, for national development, but for the rest of us to be taken together, to be integrated, you know, when I came, you were all segmented into different cultural groups. Yes, that's what I meant on ground, and I felt that that will not promote our unity. It will not give us the sort of strength that we want to work for our collective purpose. And so, I know we had NNA, but, and another one, ANNL. They were all embroiled in, uh, fight to finish. So we decided to bring everybody together, create a united Nigerian platform. Even members of Nido are all members of UNP. So, so for, yes, but for the purpose of, um, national development and, you know, um, inclusion in terms of tapping from the vast intellectual resources of Nigerians abroad, Nido is the vehicle with which the government of Nigeria recognizes. And for us here, we have been, in fact, until UNP came, the official group that we have been dealing with in Netherlands, I've been Nido. When, uh, Buhari came here, when our president came here, the people he met were on the, in, uh, were organized under the auspices of Nido. Then in terms of subvention, like you mentioned, I'm not aware, Anita will tell us how much they have received, how much they are earning. And of course, you mentioned, you mentioned that, uh, you've taken the matter up with, uh, Abike W, that is the appropriate, uh, first quarters to deal with that, not the embassy. But I can assure you that if we have any, um, official communication on what should be done to Nido, you should feel free that we will always do it. And I want to say that, um, we have one of the most, uh, very highly resourced uh, Nido group in the whole of Europe here in the Netherlands. So, uh, I think that, um, So, uh, I think that, um, the, the leadership of NIDO in Netherlands and that of UNP are always working together for the good of our people. So I've seen there are officials here as well. So there is no, in terms of trying to classify or categorize what is the difference and they, we, we work continuously, we work together. One is, you know, we have that synergy. And so, the, the, the goals and our objectives are the same. You know, so what we cannot achieve on one platform, we can achieve on the other platform. It's a seamless understanding for the purposes of achieving our collective objectives. Then on the issue, a young man in a black t-shirt asked, I understand, um, is, what I would say is one of the most uh, sensitive issues that I met and I'm sorry that I'm not able to resolve it. Uh, during my time here, I did my very best. In fact, that issue was behind my push to get the prime minister to Nigeria, believing that, uh, we use the highest level of diplomatic engagement to commit them. What he meant was that before now, in Nigeria, the Dutch embassy in Nigeria was issuing visas to, uh, Nigerians intending to travel to Netherlands or to Europe. But in two thousand and thirteen, that, um, consular service, the visa services to Nigerians was terminated. And we had to go through either Belgium embassy or France. Some people go to Ghana, I think that's the point you're trying to make, to get, um, a Nederlands visa. If you have, if you're from Nigeria, you have to travel. Now, the, the, the thing didn't go down well with everyone, especially me. So when I came, I tried to, um, find out why they had to outsource, uh, visa issuance to Belgium or to, to France. And I later realized that it was a very complex problem that has to do with the, the European Union, um, arrangement in terms of, uh, its entire amount of immigration challenge. And so, for Netherlands, they outsourced the same way. For instance, in, uh, other countries, they also outsourced, Belgium, for instance, outsources to Netherlands. But like you said, we felt that, yes, diplomacy is reciprocal. If we are doing this for you, you don't have any problem obtaining visas in our embassies in the, in our embassy in the A. Why should we have problem obtaining your visa in your, in our own country? And that's part of the understanding why, why we had to even push for them to raise their consular office in, um, in Lagos, there are trade offices, really, it used to be a trade office in Lagos, to a full fledged consulate. It is a gradual step towards removing the challenges for us to get to the point where they can issue visas. I hope fervently that in the near future, we'll get to that point. In fact, when the prime minister was in Nigeria, he was asked that question. If you were, if you, yes, by, yes, by a journalist, he was asking why they were not, uh, offering us, um, the same service that we are offering to them. And the prime minister followed, said, it's a big question for him to answer at that point, that they were still looking into it. The prime minister himself, you know, in Nigeria in November last year. And so, we understand the problem, we are still working on it. We've had, um, um, a lot of consular meetings on that with the head of, uh, department, consular section in the host ministry of foreign affairs. We've had a lot of meetings. And it's, it's something, it's a little bit beyond Netherlands zone, it's, um, uh, it's within the framework of European migration policy. So gradually, we are pushing to get to that point. A lot of issues are involved, they have explained to us. But we are still insisting, we are still insisting that we are offering that service to them and so they should offer to us. In fact, at the point, I have always gotten to the point where I was willing to recommend a retaliatory action. But we are still building and to ensure that, um, we show understanding with them until they restore that service to us. I hope that, um, it's something we'll achieve, uh, in, um, within, um, this nearest future. I hope so. So that is the problem. I, I regret that I'm not able to achieve that in the last three years. It's something that preceded me, the progress started in two thirteen, and for some reason, they stopped and outsourced. And here is an arrangement within the Schengen area, that some countries pay some, why some countries will take the order. It's their honor. So for that to be reversed, it will require going back to that old understanding. But unfortunately, we are affected by that decision negatively. But what we have agreed is that, from time to time, we intervene when some relevant people who need visas have issues. We intervene, you know, we intervene, especially when it has to do with, uh, uh, government agencies. If you have very good, for some of you, you have had issues of some of residents wanting their parents to come. They have had issues, we have intervened, we have intervened. If, uh, uh, I mean, why would somebody's mother want to come, see you, maybe see a newborn baby? They say, no, you know, I've had two or three situations like that. We have to write to the MFA to, to intervene and they did, you know, for such, uh, visas to be issued. So for us, it's still work in progress, it's still work in progress. Um, we agree that there's still lots that has to be done for us to improve in certain areas of our relationship with our host. We'll continue to, to work on it. So then, I think that Dida has answered the, the second part of clarifying about missing passport. And of course, that of, um, your question about, um, um, legalization, you know. So maybe somebody realizes that you have so much money and decides to take more. Or that today you are, you don't need to go through anybody, you, you come straight to the embassy, pay the required fee and get your product legalized. So, um, yeah, somebody asked, um, on the issue of deportation, if, uh, when I am no longer here, if that's, uh, mechanism that we have put in place, we can, it will continue because it's, uh, within the framework of the MOU that we, on migration that we have with the, with the Dutch. The important thing is, uh, uh, ensuring that you stay your ground. And I must commend, um, the consular, my consular officer, because contrary to what a lot of people think, there are times where even some of our people have failed the law, but we defend them. We defend them. We pick, we sit down and say, look, we will capitalize on maybe compassionate ground or loophole that we have seen in the process. And we'll say, no, we will not issue ETC. We, we've been doing it, even though, uh, it's not something we will bring to the public, you know, we do it. And so, if we think that you have, um, a legitimate ground to stay here and they want to take you away, when it is beyond us, that's when we, we answer. We issue ETC, we don't have a choice. But if we get, you know, uh, in a legal loophole, uh, Dida will come to me and, uh, Maxwell will say, go to that meeting, emphasize on the fact that this person cannot leave for this reason. That's what we do. I will go to argue and sometimes, they reverse this. You know, so, I mean, when people think that, oh, the embassy, Dida wants to be that. When I came, I just started seeing this, I, I was, I got some bit, a bit of culture shock. That on my test every day, I'll be signing renunciation of citizenship, renunciation of citizenship. So I called, uh, Dida, I said, what's happening now? Why are all our people leaving now? Dida said, it's good for us, there are people who want to leave, leave, that we will support them to leave because that is their choice. You know, and that's what, uh, I have come to understand. Because if it's your decision to renounce your Nigerian citizenship and remain here, who supports you? If you're undocumented and you have reason to want to remain and within, within our path to help you out, we help you out. But when it's so bad, that even you, if the case was reversed, there is nothing you can do. We have a mechanism, we have a legal mechanism within the framework of our MOU that guides our actions. It's not an arbitrary thing. And so, nobody should just sit down and think that ambassador hates you. Because I see videos, although not here, not in Netherlands, I see some very horrifying video. Even as an ambassador, I would like, come on, is it different from what we, we see here? I see people from other countries do video and will abuse embassies from beginning. And the first thing I do when I see those videos, I'll send to Dida. I say, if I get this sort of situation here, there will be war. You know, I, I'm happy that he's the one facing all the fire in here today. Because he, he knows how much I tackled him. Because the, that section is the face of the mission. Uh, whatever happens there is what people see. People don't know about the fact that, uh, you deal with bilateral issues or multilateral issues or others on grammar. What our people want is service. And that service is the one, and Maxwell, in chat. And that's why we don't joke with that section. And so, the little commendations that we have had so far is to support them to do more. Because we know that as Nigerians, our expectations are high. We are usually people who want to put in little, but we want too much. So please, let's learn how to continue to talk and we understand ourselves and, um, collectively make, uh, Nigeria a better place, especially Nigerians here in Netherlands. My expectation is to continue to have, uh, a group of Nigerians in Europe, especially in Netherlands, that will always be a reference point. Others will say, look, if you want to see how well Nigerians are organized and how well they behave, go to Netherlands. That is what I want to see. On the path of the embassy, we will continue to do our best. We will continue to improve on the quality of service that we will render to you. And I want you to know that at all times, the leadership of the mission here in Netherlands is out here for you and for what is good for all of us. This is, this is just a small word. We are all meeting here, we don't know where we will meet again. One of the things I have learned in life is what takes you to where you want to go. It's not your education, it's not your qualification, it's not, it's people that you know and how you have been with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Please, please, let us rise in our feet and give a tremendous applause to our president. Thank you. Give the last words to, yes, please.
You go?
Yes.
My excellency, I thank God for those of us here for having you. Because my experience, the past almost fifty years since I've been around here, is that, uh, I make it a point of, a point of duty to be, if not any other thing, understanding every contact ambassador that comes here since nineteen seventy-four. And I, and I told him, my first ugly experience was October nineteen seventy-four. I was in the residence, dressed with this jeans, with a garage jeans kind of, with my friend, Hakeem, who had a, a cap, a jeans cap with rough edges. So he saw us inside the room. And it was October. He said, oh, who? Are you sell us? We said, no, we're not sell us, we live here. We're coming from Netherlands, okay, uh, you can stay in the garden. I said, oh, garden, in this cold, stay in the garden? So that was an ugly experience though, but it didn't deter me from being a constant visitor to every other ambassador since nineteen seventy-four. And I make a difference, a very distinctive difference of all of them. Anything that is good for somebody doesn't have to pass all the time. It gives you time to pick up your pieces and know how best to handle your lot. Now he has told us that it is almost time for him to say, um, well, every other, uh, uh, we are, we are supposed to be here. And why he lives? Because soldiers will remain in the back. So as a matter of fact, that is not a, a very hard lesson, but we have to accept it and wish him the best. At the same time, there are mention made of issues concerning the, the, the prime minister of Holland going, Mr. Margaret, going to Nigeria. And he was told about this discrepancy in visa application for Nigerians. When we have shared in our backyard and as much money they make. I know these people, diplomatically speaking, they wouldn't have told you bluntly what is their reason to make sure that he has don't get visa to come here directly. Why Ghana, why all those places? It is a slide? Of course it is a slide. And why is this right? Because we are sit down, look people, sit down, look. Even when somebody is pulling out the food, they grab wine or say, you still sit down, they look. Most of us now don't know that the, the, the blasting, that the, the tax office must have made sure that, a lot of us, provided your, your, your son name sounds something else, they make sure that they get to make, to extract and follow you up, directly or indirectly. And you are meant to pay through your nose, whether you like it or not. About one point something million people from different areas, so now we have a political platform who says black light matters. Yes, black light matter. If we make the judicious use of it, we don't stay at home and say black light matter. This is the time for us to ask questions. Why are, why is our trade embarrassed? Why are we not having a, 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 a reflective, uh, uh, aspect of service with the Dutch? So black light, we can solve it with a political platform, which most of you may not even want to get involved. But now, we must get involved with it and use it as a platform like this.
Your excellency, sir, this, uh, bit happened for me, they gave me to try. Because they, some people are putting it upon me to just thank you and, you know, appreciate you for all you have done for us. But there is this UPNL adult education that, this, uh, leadership course that went through, through UPNL, it, uh, Rota da. So we are adults, young adults that just went back to school. Yes, so our class monitor is here. But we are having our graduation ceremony on the twenty-fifth of July. That will be next Saturday. So we will be glad if you can give us the, the privilege and the opportunity just to be seen upon us to grace the occasion for us. Ah, they said, sure. We have all the students, our class monitor, please, appreciate my ambassador.
So on the twenty-fifth of July, uh, graduation, as they go to school, we will. Chief wanted to say something. So, uh, that's what he wanted to quickly say. Chief, that chief wanted to say something to us quickly?
Uh, yes, excellency, we're in the process. Uh, as you are leaving us, uh, we're fully mentioned that. We mentioned that it was a goal that was supposed to be, wanted to, to, to bribe the deputy of. We want you to, please, we don't want you, we don't want you to grow like that, please. We want you, please, if it is possible for you, gather us together. Most of them know why you're about to be.
Is there a plan that we should be expecting? Okay, he just said that Pierre, the chairman, he will, he will, he will communicate his send off party information, date, time, your love period, course, your death issues and all that. So after that, um, please, I would like to finally say, is there anybody here?
I'm so glad, I'm so happy to be here. My name is Jerome, the chairman of Oda Agwata Progressive Union. Oda Agwata for Prince of Trenogad, all these areas. We are so, we are more than ninety members. And where I'm happy to be here today is that I never see this type of setup before. I'm forty years here now, living in Netherlands. Um, I have a lot to go home with because I was sent to come and witness what we have here today because of the previous things that have been happening. Mainly in the previous organization, they come and tell us something. Because of what happened during that time, we, the Oda Agwata, decided to back off. From anything that is happening there, some this and that, we don't want to, we don't want to. They thank God for whoever encouraged me and pushed me. Even I spoke to the chairman, Mr. Dona, on telephone. He said, I should come, let me come and witness. I've gone, I've seen, I've conquered. I'm so happy. The platform I saw today, I think the sky is our limit. It's a pity that you are leaving us, but nothing lasts forever. People have come and gone. We know one day we go, because we came one day, have to go one day, you know? But if we are to choose, we could have said, please, you have to remember permanently. Because it's not, it's not in our power to do that. So we are saying, one risk to our everyone, wherever you are going, may God bless you. And also, please, if you know that you are working with, you know, you are going and they are not going. Please, I'm begging them to continue from where it starts and to make Nigeria Embassy a home for all Nigerians.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you, thank you.
We do out and by saying, may God bless all of us and Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much. That was supposed to be the last American words. Uh, we have very important information, please, Mr. Collins, quickly. Yes, what I want to say has to be very informative.
Yes, I'm probably speaking, I'm not a man of too many words, I'm a very simple person. And the reason why I came here today is because Ronald asked me to come. I didn't even know that there exists, whatever, my power, you know. But what I'm trying to say in regards with what the gentleman said there, because of the black white matters. As a result of that, we've started an organization called Black Employee Inclusive Group, ING Bank. The key aim of that is to promote black people, to get black people, not only to be in the kitchen, but to the management level. And we've got approval from the board of ING to do that. How are we going to do this? By educating our people. And we're going to start in the, to make sure that all the applicants get proper education, get proper guidance, get mentoring. Because you need all these things to be able to come there. So what I'm trying to tell everybody here, I cannot do this alone. How come you do that? Apostle told Ronald that we have to form a work stream. So everybody in different work streams, education, culture, anything, so that we will be a working Nigerian. Stop in Nigeria, I don't know Ronald will do or I don't know, all of us, because I strongly believe in Ubuntu. I am because you are, you know, and the people who are meaningful, man, the people who say, it will be okay. But something that I really miss in Holland is that we are totally, everybody is doing their own thing, scattered, you know. There is no unity, brothers, let's start loving each other and let's start making that unity today, work together. And we need to be very powerful and make a pact to be like.
Out in the pipeline, but please, get, register in one organization or the other. Make yourself visible, we have a lot in the pipeline, okay? So I wouldn't want to bore you with that, but before I stop, I just want to recognize our Assistant Secretary General, who has been doing fantastic job, he came in a bit later, he has to work from the job, so.
So we've come to the end of today's meeting, but like you said, the most important thing, what we should take away from here today, please let us register our association or get yourself associated with one association or the other. Otherwise, you would not get any kind of help or, yeah, you can always get help, but you may just not be plugged into the main activities that is being offered on the platform. Thank you very much. I'm going to give the votes. At this point in time, a lot of us that are, I'm seeing that a lot of us are coming to this kind of platform for the first time and so we may not really recommend a lot of people on the high table. Mr. Alex is what we call the indomitable liar. Yes. This is a, this is a term used for our president back then, who has now turned out to be our president today. Oh, I don't know. He is someone that, um, I, I can only say his lack of father to everybody irrespective of who you are. I'm speaking out of experience because when my husband decided, may God bless him, so that he wanted to get Nigerian citizenship. He wanted to get Nigerian citizenship after being married to a Nigerian woman for so long, so he deserved it. He went to Mr. Alex and Mr. Alex, sorry for my children. Uh, he went to Mr. Alex and Mr. Alex showed him the way. Unfortunately, he didn't live long enough to connect the citizenship. But I'm just trying to explain to you how the man has made the embassy so accessible. He has made the embassy look like a place for every Nigerian. He is relentless, he's extremely patient, as soft spoken as he is, is how warm his heart is. I would like to recognize this man today. I pay all this warmth and kindness and humane nature, I would like to say, sir, can you give us a round of thanks?
Yeah, we've actually come to the end of today's event. I want to thank you, everyone, everyone here, without you, we're here. That's just the truth. So first and foremost, let us thank this Excellency for his resilience and for providing leadership and direction for the new, our renewed unity we have in the Nigerian community. The Excellency, we thank you so much. We also want to thank the UNP and its able leadership under its dependable chairman, Igwe. Okay, thank you so much. Been very, very active since the beginning of the association. And we are not disappointed, so we really appreciate your leadership qualities. I think everybody has seen post your, uh, those who were not so pleased with you at the beginning and now clapping for you. And we on our own path, we threw our weight behind him, not really knowing who he was, because never knew him so well before. But thank God, everything went well and so far, you've done a lot to uphold the trust um, that everybody vested in you. So thank you so much for that. And also, we want to appreciate the wise man of the advisory board. Uh, our chief is there, Dr. has just left. We appreciate you, thank you so much. So and also, uh, Nido?
Yeah.
At individual levels, it's okay, we're expecting chairman or the secretary and the rest of them, that is okay. You are heavily represented and we appreciate you. And also, Madame Reverend Endi, thank you for the energy you vested in facilitating this venue. You did everything possible, we appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Last on the list, everyone of you who is here present is highly under appreciated. Without you, as I said earlier, we wouldn't be here today. You give us the support, you give us your blessings and with that, we are able to run in the process of getting to this day today. And thank God we are here. So we thank you so much and we pray that you continue to support us, the embassy, as well as the leadership of the UNP, so that we can achieve higher goals, we've set for a set. Can always depend if we come together. So on this note, I pray that God will, in his infinite mercy, lead us out back to our ancestral homes and hopefully see you again in two weeks in Brander, October, by his grace. Thank you so much.
A quick reminder, please sanitize your hands.